All right. Call this meeting of the Toledo City Council for August twentieth, twenty twenty five. The time is now six thirty two. Call the meeting to order. The first item is the pledge of allegiance. My allegiance. All right, I will take a roll call. Counselor Kaufman.
Here.
Counselor Sylvia.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Mix.
Here.
Counselor Burns.
Right here.
Counselor Keating. Counsel President Bush.
Here.
And I am here. We have seven. We have a quorum. We can conduct business. At this time, are there any visitors who would like to address counsel on items not on our agenda this evening?
Well, yes, there is something I want to talk about on the agenda.
Please state your name for the record and comments are limited to three minutes.
So Cynthia George, and I did send a letter in regards to what I found out. So I just so that everybody is on the same page, I just found out that in Hillsborough, Oregon, we have a data centers that have come in and they have now tapped into the water resources of the state of Oregon for free. Thanks to our beautiful senators. And so from what they're reporting, every ounce of data and AI is now coming through Oregon. And it's going to be all cooled with our water. And I knew there was a water grab going on, and I see that there's a huge, huge investment in AI and technology departments in all these counties and cities. So we're actually funding our demise when it comes to our water. So that we've really failed the waters of Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on any matters not on our agenda this evening? All right. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Is there anyone online?
You don't believe so.
All right. Next item is consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that. Especially the outdoor event pet parade. That beautiful application. One error.
It's been by Frank seconded by Tracy to approve the consent agenda as presented. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Keating.
Yes.
Counsel President Bush.
Yes.
Counselor Mix.
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia.
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes. Motion carries seven zero. Now on to discussion and information items. The first, the first item is a video from the League of Oregon Cities and update from League of Oregon Cities Executive Director Patty Moberhill.
I see Rich. I see Rich too. Hi, Rich.
Hi, Rich.
Hi, Rich.
Hi, Rich.
Hi, Judy.
It's funny.
We're gonna keep it going.
Okay, I'm not sure if we're playing Hollywood Squirtin', but we're good. Thank you, David.
Sorry. Trying to remember his class.
I'm not sure where we do.
Can you kill the top one? Yes. There we go.
Judy shaking her head no.
Let's try that.
Now, now that you can hear us now.
Hear us now.
Got thumbs up now. Yes. Yay, good stuff. Thank you. Good job.
Hey, there we go.
Create the problem and be the solution.
Just to give you guys a little bit of a backstory, most of you probably have seen me before as a wrestling coach when I came in here and presented. My name is Tyler Watkins, thirty seven years old. I grew up in Toledo. Graduated from Newport High School in two thousand and seven. Then to George Fox University and then ended up dropping out of college because I did not have the structure or discipline in my life to stay focused on my academics and just was out too late. Run up the wrong people and ended up having to drop out of college, moved back home and then ended up joining the military where I served ten years as a special forces operator, the United States Navy. After that time in the Navy, I came back home and became a Lincoln County Sheriff's Office Patrol Division. Had the privilege of serving in that capacity as as the select contracted deputy. After two years of that, I realized that, man, I'm just not affecting the change and I kind of was a little bit. Maybe maybe just like dis- disenfranchised, I guess, or I was very excited to come home to try to make change. And it just didn't really happen. It's kind of saw the same revolving door for the same people. And I was like, man, it's just what we're doing is not really working. Ended up quitting working at the sheriff's office, went fishing up in Alaska for a couple of years. And then got a job at the Lincoln County School District working as the PE strength training coach and wrestling coach at Toledo Junior Senior High School. And I stink and love it. Like, I love what I do at Toledo High School. It is teaching is the most, I would say, challenging job because it tests every ounce of patience that you have with kids sometimes. But it's also the most rewarding. You know, it is really where you start to affect change by becoming a safety net and championing these kids throughout their walk through seventh grade all the way through to twelfth grade. So this will be my third year there, but in my time there, I've realized that you just can't get all the kids. And this has been reiterated to me over and over and over and over again by administration and the staff at the school who are good hearted people. Really amazing teachers. The team there that we have is phenomenal. But they remind me all the time that you can't get them all. And in my mind, I understand that, but in my heart, it doesn't sit well with me. And I saw that we're missing kids. Kids are slipping through the cracks and it's not okay. And I just said, well, we need to do more. We need to chase these kids. And so I had a lot of cute kids in in the school that I tried to pull into sports and athletics and other clubs. But the school will not allow it because they have too many behavior type issues or attendance issues or the grades aren't there yet. The carrot is set so far in front of these kids that they just can't reach it. But they're they're missing structure. They're missing mentorship. And I've seen the impact that mentorship can have on a kid through a coaching environment in athletes. And I'm a big believer in athletics. But I thought to myself, like, there's gotta be something else that we can that can be done here. And I watched it for two years and tried for two years. And so that started the Toledo High School Skate Club. And you probably have seen our events or flyers around town for the skate contest that we've been throwing. And it's been absolutely amazing, but the biggest impact for me has been to see some of these kids and the pride that they wear their Boomer logo on a Toledo High School Skate Club. To be a part of something that they never thought they could ever be a part of. To show up religiously on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the skate park to be a part of something and be included in something. And it's and it's turned into a lot more than that. What it's done is it's put a chokehold on my wallet because these kids are asking, hey, Mr. Watkins, what are you doing after this? You know, at five o'clock. And I'm like, well, I'm gonna go eat dinner with my kids and and my family. And they're like, well, can we come over? Or do you got ten bucks so that we can get a burrito? And it's highlighted the food insecurity that a lot of our population face as as kids. And to to hear some of the stories that I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna share with you, but most of these kids, you just, and I say these kids, I really, I really mean all kids. All kids deserve to have a safe place. All kids deserve to have somebody believe in them. All kids deserve to have somebody say like, I think that you can do more than you think you could do. Let's do it together. And that's our mission with the homie house. That is what has started this, is that there needs to be structure. There needs to be a safe place for kids to go and connect with adults that believe in them. Wholeheartedly believe in them and are willing to show up. I tried to not do this. I called other nonprofits. I called very, very successful nonprofits and asked if they would expand. Asked if they would set up something and I continuously heard that this doesn't fit their business model or it's not in their business plans to expand at this time or this isn't the right area because it doesn't fit their data. And I was like, fine, I'll do it. Like, I'll show you that you don't need, you don't need a super tight business model to make something work. You just have to find a way to do it. So what I've done, Mr. Cross was at one of our meetings. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but I asked, I asked people that that I have a tremendous respect for to show up and meet in the school. And I just drew it on a whiteboard in the gymnasium of this is what I'm thinking needs to happen. Based on the feedback and interactions that I'm hearing from my students, my kids that are in my athletics, the kids that are in the skate club and then other kids in our community that have dropped out of school prior. And the need, the need is really just a hundred percent wraparound support. That's what's needed in our kids. And I didn't know how to do that. And so what I did is I asked my team to believe in what we're doing, to see the need for themselves. Come, come, come and meet some of the kids at our community events. So we've thrown a couple of different events. We had a summer cook off party where we gave out free hot dogs and had yard games. And we had over two hundred people in attendance at that event. We we just threw a skate contest where we had people from the valley come and Newport and Taft and all over from the county. And they're able to hear about what the homie house is about. During that time, the public comments and feedback is like, man, this is so needed. This is so needed. The need is palpable. And we all know that the need is palpable. We are afraid to step out and do it. And I can't sit by and lose kids. Like, it keeps me up at night and I'm crying in the shower because I don't really cry. So it's just rainwater or the shower water on my face. But I I I am, we're launching. We've, we've got our five oh one C three. We've done the paperwork. We've found a building. We're signing the contract on Main Street in a couple of weeks here. And then we're going to be doors open in October. We've set our budget at fifty thousand dollars for operating costs year one. I've got that down to about twenty five thousand dollars and that includes our, all of our liability insurances, our DO insurances, our lease on the building. And then our programs that we're going to be offering. So what does it look like? What does the homie house look like? The homie house is a space where if you walk in the front door and you're between the ages of fourteen and twenty one years old, you're the most important person in the room. And we want to connect with you. We want you to feel like you belong. I don't care who you are, where you come from, you belong here because we want you here. So it's a living room type feel, like a house, a living room that we all wish that we had and felt safe in. There's no drugs. There's no alcohol. And there's, there's no pilots at all. This is a safe, safe place for kids. We are not a prevention program. We are a long-term mentorship program and we focus on retention, keeping the kids coming back. We are partnering with Senexo moving forward, who it provides lunches for all of our public schools. They will be providing food to our kids. So what we do, doors will be open. This is the vision. Doors will be open at three thirty. The kids will come in and we will hang out, play games and and really just bond, catch up with each other. At five thirty, we'll begin eating a meal together. This is our family meal time. Family meals are important. Family meals show connection. Sharing meals, doesn't matter where you go in the world, if you sit down with someone, share a meal with them. There's, there's intimacy and connection in that. So we're going to provide meals for them. We'll clean up the meals. And then in December, we're going to roll out our professional development program. And our professional development program looks like partnering with businesses to create apprenticeship programs. What we do is we'll sit a kid down, we'll build a resume, we'll figure out what their interests are, we'll work on interview techniques with the with the kids, and then we'll get these kids plugged into apprenticeship. So this does a couple of things. Want to provide real world experience for them before the age of eighteen that they can put on a resume for after they graduate. It opens up their aperture to different industries that they might not have been able to experience. They don't know that they, what they don't know, and you haven't seen it, so you don't really know what it is yet. The other thing that it does is it affords them time in an industry where the hours that they work, as long as it's signed off by a supervisor, we can partner with Lincoln County School District. Turn those hours into the school and they can receive school credit towards their graduation. Our goal is maturation towards college, towards some trade of some sort. And towards or the towards the military, maturing our kids to some plan. The kids, when they come in, will be required to write down a timeline of where they've come from, where they're at currently, and where they see themselves at eighteen. Which is of course a shifting target to a fourteen year old. But they will be able to maintain that with next action steps to be able to move them towards graduation and maturing into something. With me, I brought Kai Zimmerman, who is one of my wrestlers. He's actually a national qualifying wrestler. He's going to be a senior at Toledo Junior Senior High School this next year. I'd like, I've asked Kai to come and just kind of share a little bit of his perspective of what, what mentorship looks like for him through the skating club and then and then what it might mean to some of his friends.
My name is Kai Zimmerman, and the Toledo Homie House really means the world to me. I think it's gonna build a character and it's just gonna build a community for all of the kids that may not feel at home or may not even have a home. You know, there's a lot of people and friends that I have inside this community that don't have a sense of purpose, don't have a sense of where they're going, don't. They don't, they don't know what they're gonna eat, you know? They don't know where they're gonna sleep that night. And I think the Toledo Homie House is really just gonna, i- it's gonna, it's gonna help them out. And I think that Watkins is doing an amazing job with the skate club and all that. I think it's already made progression inside of our community. I've already seen so many new people, so many people from Newport and different communities coming by to stop by for the skate competitions. Just check it out. And it's been awesome. I'd like to thank you and that we're very blessed to have someone like Mr. Watkins as a leader.
So, yeah, I think it just, it provides provides a lot of purpose, you know, and opportunity when you believe in somebody. And those of us fortunate enough to work with kids have seen that really doesn't take much to change the trajectory of somebody's life. And our return on investment, one. If you can change the trajectory of one kid's life, man, like, how much is that worth, you know? So my, my staff, I'm gonna open up the floor to my team to come up and share, you know, why their hearts and why, why they're invested in this. And then I'll come up with some closing remarks. Thank you.
Thanks, my Russ.
Thank you.
Me too. Hi, my name is Crystal Taylor. I am a mother. I'm a community member. I'm a coach for Toledo High School. I'm a teacher within the school system. I graduated from Toledo. And so the really bounce off of what Tyler said is obviously there's a vision and we believe in him, you know? It's not hard to trust the words from a kid that has had a hard time. And to know like, he believes in it too, and to want to be a part of something bigger than that, you know? We've worked with kids. I was a middle school teacher when I was in the classroom and I work with native youth now outside the classroom. And so I do see the need that kids need a space where they feel loved, they feel respected, they feel like somebody's in their corner. And I don't always feel like we have the chance in a classroom to give and provide that because we have how many kids within that in a day. And, you know, sometimes they're the easy kids and sometimes they're the hard kids, but every child deserves our best. And so, you know, to provide a space for them and to let them know that they can reach for something bigger is beautiful. And not every kid has been given that chance, you know? I was raised here and I've lived in slits most of my life. And so I know what could happen to those kids who fall through the cracks. And, you know, Tyler has been an easy person to follow because he, he dreams so big. And it becomes real so fast that you kind of get your head snapped, you know? Even though we're exhausted, we've already coached all day and we've had a kick camp. We're still here because we believe in this, you know? That's how much we truly believe that this is not needed. And we really want our community to open their arms to our kids and the ones that may need this space, no matter who they are. And we just want to make sure that they know that we're always there for them, no matter they're going through an easy time or a hard time. And I would love our community to really accept it, no matter what kid walks through those doors. And that may be a hard ask, but I do believe that it could happen. Okay, I was gonna say, I'll be mine, sorry. But I just, it's a testament of him. It's a testament of our kids believing in him and what kind of person and spaces we could really become.
I'm Deanne Barnhart. I am, have lived in Toledo my whole life. I'm an alumni also. I have been, had the pleasure of coaching many teams. As soon as I graduated, I started coaching. All four of my kids will and have graduated from Toledo High School. So I have definitely, I'm invested. I'm invested a lot with the athletes. And so doing the homie houses changed my view of, you know, just like everybody, right? You get the athletes, but then now like this whole side, you can get everybody. Everybody is welcome. I also work at Toledo High School too, and I am the graduation coach, freshman success teacher. And I also do some online helping students recover credits. And it's definitely, this space is definitely needed, something outside of the school that they can come and feel like they're not being judged or, you know, and that, you know, just finding that trust within us is, I feel like kids, it's pretty easy for them to come and trust us. And so, you know, like Crystal said, we were invested. We've been coaching all day and year round. We're sucked into anything, you know? I pretty much have sucker written on my forehead. So.
Only in like, it needs.
A little bit. We gotta wash that off a little bit.
Yeah, so, but you know, any thing for the kids in our community, I'm definitely for. And so I think things go through seasons, but I think this is something that's huge and needed in our community. And I'm just really excited that Tyler has pushed forward and tried and is bringing his vision to light. So. Can you back in the bar times?
My name's Kenneth Wood, and I am a long term member of Lincoln County. I've been here forty three years. And my story's a little bit different. You know, I'm a person of long term recovery. And I know that essentially, right now, the way I think about it is, when I was a kid growing up in this county, if I would have had something like this implemented, then, you know, I might not went down the path I did. But since, since growing up and getting my head straight and, you know, beginning to do the right things in life, I got into the adult services of peer recovery mentorship. And I did that for a few years. Ultimately, I feel like the kids, if we can prevent it before it gets to that phase, it would be so much more impactful. Especially in our community. I mean, there's three things that I think are imperative, and it's the mindset, the skill set and the habits. And if we can implement those three things, you know, there's nothing that we can't do. And when Tyler came to me with this vision and told me what he wanted to do, I thought there's no way that, you know, I was gonna say no and not jump on board and give it all I got to be able to be supportive to him and to this mission and everything that that we stand for. Because ultimately, it is gonna make an impact. And like he said, if we can change one kid's life, I mean, you know, that's, that's what it's about. And for, for those kids to be able to get mentored and learn and pass that on to some other kids that see that they're doing that, you know, that's what it's about in life, right? If you want to do something, you got to find somebody that's already done it, do what they did, and hopefully you'll get what they got. So with that, I feel like this program is gonna be absolutely amazing and I'm honored to be part of it with Tyler. So.
Hi there. My name is Karen Murphy. I've lived in this community since nineteen eighty six. I raised a child here. In fact, my son went to school with Tyler. So I've known him since he was a little rascal himself. I have been given an opportunity. Tyler extended to me an invitation to become a part of this group. And I want to tell you, the first impression I had was how amazing the complexity of the skills and and offerings that the people who he draws to him can bring to any kind of project. I have been a therapist since whenever I graduated in the nineties. I worked at the hospital for twenty years. I have run a private practice also and worked mostly whatever I could with kids and teenagers. They're my passion. I've been working in this field since I was nineteen. I was trying to retire, but speaking of getting a purpose in life, I've been handed that. And I'm very excited about what we can all offer from our different perspectives. And I know what a difference one person can make in a child's life. And I am just grateful that you are here doing what you do so that you can support programs like this and make everyone in the community better. Each one of us has been tough, at least ten people in a positive way. So, sorry, Karen.
It's okay, Tracy. I, I, I don't know what else to say. You've heard from us. You've heard, oh, I know. I wanted to say, he may have brought together a
he may have brought together a bunch of people who have different skillsets and experiences, but we all have the same.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, it's not just me. And I'm very pleased that I'm not the smartest person in the ring. Feel super humbled too. The people behind me, the people that are funding it. So what we're asking for today is, is, is this is a, as I'm new to the nonprofit sector, I'm learning that you need, um, seed money, you need community partnerships. This is what I would hope for is that as we're growing and developing that our relationship with each and every single one of you is gonna continue to grow and develop. But as a city that we hope to serve the youth in this city and in the county, that, that there's, it's not just mutually exclusive where I'm coming to you and asking for money. Today I'm asking for twenty thousand dollars of seed money to help us get a seat at the table with some of these grants. I've been on phone calls with board members at these grant operations and they say you need community investment. And so what it takes is it takes blind trust. I don't have the data to show you for the return on the investment. But what I do have is anecdotal data, unquantifiable data. The, the lives and the stories that I know that have already been impacted. And also the lives that have been lost, like the ones that are struggling with addiction, the ones that are sleeping somewhere, nobody knows where. And the, the connections that's missed. So that's anecdotal data. But what we will have and what we will be able to show is success over time. But I need, I need initial investment. I need startup capital to get me a seat at the table to be able to say, I have community partnership and I have the backing. In addition, it's to supplement this request, what we'd like to do is partner with the city of Toledo. I'd like every single one of our kids that comes through the homie house in this long-term cycle to have at least ten hours a month of community service. That's giving back the heart of servant hood. I can't do this if I don't have that heart, right? And that is something that I feel like is, is noteworthy to be able to teach. But how do you teach that? Will you model that? You model servant hood. And I was lucky enough to have phenomenal parents in my life that showed me that from a very early age. And a lot of other people in my life that showed me that giving is very easy and it requires nothing. So one, one of the programs that we'd like to roll out is by partnering with the city of Toledo. At least ten hours a month, we have teams in the homie house of youth that manage the relationship potentially with one of the youth that says this is what the city needs. And I'd like to start by offering up a, um, a graffiti removal team to remove the graffiti that I think some of our kids are probably allegedly not here teaching. I mean, giving back, giving back to the community that's giving so much to, to them and in this capacity. So I wanna thank you for your time. Thank you so much for giving us on the agenda. Thank you for, yeah.
I, I tried to listen really fast.
Yeah.
This is most interesting. I do have a question. So, um, will you have regular hours of operation? I, I'm unclear. So what's your?
Closing time's gonna be nine because I
Sorry, say it.
Nine, nine P, nine P M is gonna be our closing time. So
Three thirty to nine.
Three thirty, three thirty to about five thirty is gonna be our hangout time where we just focus on connection.
That's just during the week. What about weekends?
We'd like, we'd like to be every day of the week. The need doesn't change.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if weekends you'd be open all day.
Yeah, we, we'd like, it's probably about noon. Most kids don't wake up before noon on weekends. It's probably open around noon and then close, you know, later on in the evening. I know that there's try to set ordinances to restrict minors.
And just of what you were saying about being new, new to grant writing and all of that. You, they will probably ask letters.
Correct, yeah.
Community engagement letters and let us know.
Because that is, that is something to be asking for in the future as well. So we do have loose partnerships with, with Potta, um, um, the Lincoln County School District. The Celeste Tribe as, as in the prevention, uh, department as well as their education department. So these are loose partnerships that, again, we're just grass roots at this point, but those are developing relationships that I think will not be uh, mutually exclusive. That'll be beneficial to everybody, but really the kid is the end user. And so we wanna just make sure that we're keeping the, the child and looking like first and foremost.
Actually, it's after the meeting, there's something you'll want to give out.
Okay. Any other questions I can fill this out? Thank you, Jack. Anyone question?
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is on the street dance.
Oh, I'm shocked to show up to an do, have you choreographed that? We'll help you. Absolutely.
Okay, so. All right. So this is really timely because, um, when Frank talked about the homie house at our last meeting. And we got to talking about having a, a street dance as a fundraiser. And then I, I've since then been talking to people who also recommend rather than a street dance, have it be a fair uh, that it would maybe draw more people. So what we need is to decide on a date. Yes.
Have a street dance and community fair as part of it. I mean, the community fair and the street dance is part of it. So, so in creating this, we're gonna need some help and would like to pull in your team in that that we could perhaps set up a meeting where we could create what we wanna do and figure out when, but we need to move quickly on it. I wanna, so we can, so we can do it, um,
Before what?
Before the win, we have a rise.
We, we move, we move pretty fast.
Yeah.
You have some really good experience at putting things together.
Oh, yippie, because I don't.
So, this, it would be now, ladies, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But the homecoming dances are usually on a Saturday, correct?
Yeah, but and they, they just moved our homecoming week to October twentieth through the
I know. And the football team is very, 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 I'll say fifteen more times, but I have to thankful that you moved that day.
You're welcome. And so I, I do leadership at the high school, so we can have some of our council help too.
Exactly.
Yay. Okay. So I think the next thing we need to do is set a date and a time when we can all gather together to do the brainstorming and figure on a date, because I don't think we'll do it, accomplish it here tonight necessarily.
Next week's special.
So, right. So if, if you could leave me your email addresses before you leave tonight, put them in my little book here, okay? I'll get out a doodle poll to y'all and see what we can get for next week to, to be able to have time to talk this over. Okay, I have your guys. So.
Okay.
No way.
Yes, ma'am.
From the outdoor permit perspective, we just need to know who is putting that on whose insurance we're using.
Right. And that's, and that's part of what we're gonna have to look at for next week. It's how are we gonna do that? That work?
I think so. And I, I really would like for us to host, especially to help get the word out and to show that we're behind you guys.
Yep.
So it'd be the city hosting it.
Yes. And, and so we can. Yeah, yeah. And so I'll submit the application once we get the details on it.
And we can make it an annual event that we do over here.
Thank you very much. You're a big man.
That's terrible.
Any other comments or questions on the street dance idea?
I, I think there's lots of ideas. I just think it's gonna be fun.
Right. Good? Okay. Next item, we move to decision items. First item under decision items is the city manager contract. David?
So we've discussed the terms of the contract we have received from Mr. Hevner, who was online with us this evening. It was a order to, uh, an executed version. You and I have, uh, counsel, we've discussed what's in this contract. So at this point in time, I'm, I'm not gonna furnish any additional information that you already have. So it's really
You wanted to say something?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Rich, you have the floor?
Can we take a second and let people leave if they like to?
Does anyone here wanna stay? Do you wanna stay or do you wanna go?
They stay.
They're staying. All right.
Okay. Is Karen, Karen, do you wanna leave?
No, I just wanna know where we're gonna write down our email addresses. I'm already trying to organize. Okay, here it is.
That's a, okay. Thank you.
I got you.
Thanks. Already passed me that.
Oh, but no, no.
We're not.
Thanks.
I'll say. Sorry, Rich, we're a little
Sorry for the
Weird here, you know, while I learn.
You'll get used to it.
Yeah.
Hey, I really enjoyed hearing about these programs and events tonight, so I have no problem being patient.
I'll pick this up. I don't move fast.
Actually, your presentation.
Crystal is so good.
I got it.
Thank you, Russell. Right, Rich, what do you got for us?
Hey, Rich.
Well, I'll be, I'll be brief this evening. I just wanna, uh, good evening, Mayor Council. I, I just wanted to say very briefly that, uh, I've, I've expressed to Mayor Cross when he called me the other night, uh, but I just wanna, uh, tell all of you, I'm, I'm very honored to have been uh, selected, uh, to be your next city manager. I'm really excited. I had a great time um, coming down to the community and going through the interview process, getting a tour, really getting to know the, the community and, and, uh, the, the things that make Toledo a, a great place to live. And I'm, I'm really excited to, um, be your next city manager. I'm really excited to get to work with, with all of you and, and just honored to have been uh, selected. So just wanted to take a moment to, to say that tonight. I will be there on September second. Um, working arrangements on the move right now, but, uh, really, really excited to see all of you in person in a couple of weeks. And, uh, thank you very much for the offer and your consideration of the, the proposed contract tonight. Looking forward to working with, with everybody.
Thank you, Rich. So counsel, I think we have a question. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the city manager contract as presented.
Second.
Do we even add anything else to that, David?
Yeah, there is language.
Authorized only. Authorized.
Okay, I'll take that back. I move to approve the proposed contract of engaging Richard Hevner.
Hevner.
Hevner, sorry. Hevner, as the next, those German guys, I'm telling you, I can't even say their name right. Anyway, I move to approve the proposed contract for engaging Richard Hevner as the next Toledo city manager and authorize as the next Toledo city, anyway, it'll be a whole city now, and authorize the mayor to execute, execute the same.
So, okay.
It's been moved by Tracy, seconded by Frank to approve the, the proposed contract for engaging Richard Hevner as the next Toledo city manager and authorize the mayor to execute the same. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes, please.
So Burns?
You betcha.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Counsel Mick?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I vote way in the affirmative. Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you all very much. That enthusiastic, uh, vote was, uh, much, much appreciated and very affirming. Thank you all.
All right. Our next item is contributions committee.
Turn this over to Krista, who did the, like, where we are on this project.
Great. The contributions committee met August fourth and per my staff report, two more of the applications were discovered after that meeting. So, um, my proposal was to split the difference that was left over in the fund with the two remaining applicants.
Much for questions or comments, counsel?
No.
Okay, I'm holding.
Wait.
Oh. So the proposal is for the Yacina River, which gave a park for one thousand one hundred and seventy, the Ark of Lincoln County for four thousand. Toledo Rotary Club for one thousand. Toledo Meals on Wheels, two thousand. Yacina Historical Railroad, one thousand five hundred. Homie House, which I misspelled and here's my apologies, I will correct that, for two thousand. Toledo Food Share Pantry, six thousand. Toledo History Center, one thousand five hundred. The two remaining was the summer festival, which was requesting five thousand. And the Oregon Coast Children's Theater and Art Center, they were requesting one thousand. My proposal is to split the difference of one thousand and five dollars between the summer festival and the children's theater. And that would take you to a zero balance in the fund. Great. I need to recuse.
Okay. So speak up. So.
Okay, I need to recuse myself from this vote because of my involvement with several of these committees.
Any other questions, comments, counsel? We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the contributions committee recommendations as presented.
I second it.
The move by Frank, seconded by Kim to approve the contributions committee recommendations as presented. We'll take a roll call vote. Counsel Kaufman, thank you. Counsel Burns?
Yes.
Counsel Keating?
Yes.
Counsel President Bush?
Yes.
Counsel Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six, zero, noting the refusement of Counselor Mick. Our next item, Northwest Coastal Housing. Hi Sheila. And they are requesting an SDC Systems Development Charge waiver for the Olala Meadows Project located in fifteen eighty-five Southeast Urban Road.
You look like you're going to
I leaned in on the comments, please. So, I won't steal your thunder.
Oh, I have no thunder, thunder to steal, no more time.
This is your first ever, uh, application under the new ordinance fourteen twenty-three. I believe that was, I think it's fourteen twenty-three, which was, uh, brought back to recently for reconsideration after a bit of hiatus. Um, we received the, the completed application for the SDC waiver this past Wednesday. The normal course of business, which we, which we really don't have time for at this point in time, would be to ask you, would have him develop this, an agreement together with staff and come to you with an agreement, post form resolution. We will, in a public hearing, we will still do that. But at this point, we'd be given the urgencies of getting this project off the ground. We'd like to come to you at least now to get a sense of counsel uh, by way of one of the several motions that are laid out for you to give us further directions so that we can, if, if we'll be in your druthers to proceed, then we can, we can proceed with drafting up the, the resolution and agreement. And so with that, Sheila, do you wanna add anything to my comments?
No, this is, um, again, Sheila Stiley, Executive Director, Northwest Coastal Housing. Um, you've seen me before. Project's not new. Um, good news, state funded it. Um, so that's great news, um, hot off the press as of August first. Um, so that's really good news. Uh, we are definitely looking to break ground. We're looking to close probably in May of twenty-six and hopefully looking to break ground in June. So, um, we are looking at, time is of the essence. They funded nine point three million of close to eleven. So obviously there's a gap that we're looking at with this. Um, we do appreciate the, the great efforts that the city of Toledo has put through to get this grant funded for the, uh, for the systems that needed to be there, which we understand would offset these fees. It would not be an additional cost that would go out to the city. So we are, um, just requesting that. And obviously we have a few more steps that we have to complete this process since this is very new. Um, but I am here for any questions that you might have.
Are you asking, um, for waiver of the inspection and installation fees as well? Or just the SDC fees?
Just the, yeah, just the SDCs.
I was not sure because I was looking at your chart and included them. And it broke them down before there, so I wasn't sure.
The way that Arlene puts those together is, um, it goes through a little bit of a process with their SDCs, with their breakdown. So, yeah. I, I, I would, uh, say go, go talk to Arlene.
Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
I just like that it's happening.
One rule.
Yeah, it was a hard battle. I mean, really, truly, I, we, we had a hard battle with the state. There were two projects that were gonna get funded and take all of the rural money
that was set aside for the entire state. It was quite a battle that we had to go through with all of our rural counties coming together to the state and have some arguments. And I was not avoiding that table. Um, so anyway, here we are again and we're funded and we're grateful.
There's been, I'm counsel, like, you know, that too, so. And you were talking about it like the very first week. It's been a long time. Yeah.
Is there no public comment?
There will be in a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be nice.
Any other questions, counsel? Any other questions? All right. Now, the public would like to speak to this matter.
Got me to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So Cynthia George, you know, I've been here for probably the last three years discussing how you guys are using a really bad area to put this low-income housing underneath the GP pipe, so these kids are gonna be breathing that air. You're in a FEMA flood zone. The only place that's out of that flood zone is a little teeny tiny spot on that hill, so, unless your building plan is only on that hill spot, you're putting people in a flood plain, in a wetland mitigation spot, and we could go on and on about why that was terrible, but the big thing is, and I'd like to know, is this $240,000 worth of fees that they're trying to, to get forgiven for? Is that, because I looked.
Kevin, it's, it, it, it's a different process. It's a waiver process.
Waiver, okay.
So what it, it's, it's, it kind of puts the fees on hold, as long as they use it for low-income purposes. I mean, we write up a whole agreement, and then if anything goes wrong, then after a period of time, they're forgiven.
Right, so, so you're gonna give them $240,000 while you took $640,000 grant to replace your water pipes. And you told me, you called me a liar, when I brought that up, that you were fixing those pipes, you took that money to fix those pipes, and that's why you're putting those apartments in there. And you got mad at me and accused me of all kinds of things, and yet, when I read your agenda, dear sir, what were those lines and that $640,000 earmarked for but fixing the lines for the apartment complex, was it not?
We are accepting.
Please do not call me a liar anymore. All righty, sir?
Are you gonna let them respond?
No, because I've heard his responses over and over. Okay?
Thank you.
And you do whatever you want to do anyway, regardless of the children's health.
Then why bother?
Exactly. Trust me, it's like, I, I slam it like flair. I am being nice, but why, why bother?
Just come in and vomit?
Yep, that's usually how it works.
So, I, I would like to.
All right, Judge, hold on, okay? I know. Save it for council comments. Okay. So, do we have a motion?
There's like three different bullet points.
Uh huh, exactly, so.
You're, you're gonna have to work. For the discussion on this before we actually make them.
That's why I asked you earlier, so, is there any discussion?
Well, I would, I would like to discuss a couple of com, the points that were brought up.
Okay.
By Cynthia, just so we can get them out of the way because it's muddy and the water's now. Thank you.
Yep.
Not to attack anybody, number one, this is not under any GP pipe. I don't know where that came from.
I think she was referring to the.
To bring the.
This one, okay. I live right by the smokestack, I have no issues. Um, and it's not what it was 20 years ago.
Amen.
I mean, they have cleaned that up so much, that you're looking at mainly just water vapor coming out of that pipe anymore. It's a big difference. It used to be we had to wash our cars every week, and we were still having acid eating rust holes, and we don't have that anymore. Um, the second thing she brought up was that it's in the FEMA flood zone. My understanding is it's just out of the FEMA flood zone.
Probably.
And therefore, we're not putting anybody in a flood zone. We're not endangering our children in that way. This, this council has deeply considered every issue, as has, as has Northwest Coastal Housing. This is a development from low-income, desperately needed for. What, honey?
And the Planning Commission.
Okay, and the Planning Commission, they did as well. The Planning Commission did all their work ahead of time, you know, it doesn't even come to us before the Planning Commission clears it and goes through all of these bullet points that this, um, that Ms. George has brought up, unfortunately, um, and what was the other one?
About the water pipe and the 600,000.
Okay, I have no idea what she's talking about there.
I can tell you what she thought.
Please do.
Okay, so what she's talking about is, remember, we were awarded a grant from the state of Oregon, so that we can upgrade our water and sewer lines to be able to handle another 30 units on Servant Road. We're given that money by the state to do that project. It doesn't have anything to do with a system development charge. System development charges are posted to you, and you pay them when you build, when you build a house normally, and they go into a bank, called the System Development Charge Fund, okay, and it is for future expansion of infrastructure. What we are being asked to do tonight is to, in the future, hopefully, we're gonna waive it, but it's part of the contract that it has to stay affordable housing. If it does that, then those fees are waived by the city of Toledo. Okay, that's what.
After so many years.
After so many years. I believe it's gotta go at least 30 years, if I remember correctly.
20 or 30.
Now, for those of you that have followed the system development charge battles in this state, this is a good deal. We're going to get desperately needed housing at a cost point that allows it to be affordable housing for a period of time. Okay, and in our working and in our discussions with Ms. Mrs. Stiley and Northwest Coastal Housing, it's been almost four and a half years that we've been working down this road. Um, and for those of you that have been around city Toledo politics for any long period of time, this is one of my projects back in 2009, and we couldn't get it off the ground. And now, we're moving, we're gifted, and I cannot be prouder of our team, whether that's the council, our staff, working with Northwest Coastal Housing, and all the myriad other agencies we've had to work with to get this done. And the Planning Commission, otherwise my bouncer might get a little ugly down there. But, this has been a long road.
They do a lot of.
This is gonna be our last step, centrally, from this council. Our people need this. And, for our people to thrive, we've gotta get this, and we're gonna have to figure out how to get more. And so, maybe we do do a hiccup, but guess what? We will learn, we'll get better, and we'll keep doing it.
And for anybody who doesn't know, we have very little builtable land.
Exactly.
We are the weirdest community.
Yes, this is an investment in our future. Okay, to help improve this community, and.
We aren't.
If we have, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this before I go, Jackie?
We aren't trying to forgive the SDCs, which is how some people are seeing it, that we're losing all of this money. We may not gain that money, but we gain housing.
Which is an incentive.
That housing is more important than the money. And if we can use that money, or lack thereof, to our bank account, to guarantee affordable housing for our citizens, I would say it's an investment of that money, not a loss of that money.
It's choosing people over profit.
Uh huh.
And for those people who think we're gonna lose all this money, it's 30 minutes. They still have to use water, they still have to use the sewer. We're gonna be in the benefit here. So, I just.
It's an investment, it's not a loss.
I'm sorry I snapped earlier because I am, I'm frustrated. I've been at this particular project for 17 years. I am just, I'm like, I could snow the finish line, and I wanna see it done. And so I would last ask Council, go Andrew.
Uh, I move to direct city staff to draft a resolution and agreement, uh, of this SDC waiver as discussed today, uh, and bring the resolution agreement back to City Council for final approval at a future city council meeting.
I'll second that. Emphatically.
We don't mean maybe. It doesn't work out like this. We discovered that earlier.
All right. The move by Andrew, seconded by Frank, to direct city staff to draft a resolution and agreement based on the discussion, and to have staff bring the resolution and agreement back to the city council for final improvement at a, vital approval at a future city council meeting. I will take a roll call vote. Counselor Kaufman?
Yes.
Counselor Mix?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes, please.
Counsel President Bush?
Heck yeah.
Counselor Sylvia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Keating?
Most certainly.
And I emphatically, and if I could, I'd jump up and down and do a jig for you at the vote.
Oh, I gotta stay there.
Uh, staff reporter David, you have anything for us?
Just a couple of real quick things. So, a reminder, next week we're meeting at 5:00 PM at the building, at the, I wouldn't say the city center building, whatever, to meet with our architect, Sid Edwards, from Scott Edwards, to do a, walk through the building, and then, if, they will be back to your, he will come back to your study session, I believe afterwards, to walk through the time schedule that you, that you will have to get from here to, you know, a, a good community engagement process, and ultimately a set of, uh, a vision and plan for that building, that then the mayor and the end staff can go try to get some funding for.
So, we're meeting you there at 5:00?
Yeah, so it's the collective.
Since they're collective, it's part of the work session, all of you.
Okay.
If, if you can be there at 5:00, you'll have your regular meeting back here at 6:00 to do one, to revisit with your, your architect. And two, I think, uh, Savani and I will be there to help you start a conversation about your charter and your council rules. I believe you want to take those up together.
I have to save my thoughts, let me off early, but.
I, if, if you wanna.
We're all looking to job them.
So, the other thing is.
The next, this next meeting is when we're planning on having the discussion about our council rules and our charter.
That's right.
Okay, we've, I, I feel like we've covered this a couple of times now, that the intention was for this to happen after the new city manager was on board. I'm sure that we agreed on this and corrected it. Now, this is a third time I feel like we've correct.
Want to get off the agenda, you can.
Fine.
Yes.
So, let's just go over the building.
Go over the building, you have that conversation. If there's anything else to go throw in, thanks. The study session, we can try to prep for that. We, we, we had in mind to bring water to you, but, Brian will be, is on vacation that week, and so, it's, I believe, is timely. So, the only, just a couple of real, other really quick things. I, Aaron and I had opportunity to visit with a couple of, uh, state staff today from each of Slush's team, uh, with related to this project. The governor is anxious to come in and do a groundbreaking on this project, both on the, both on the building of the project and on, and on the infrastructure piece.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of excitement and sale about this effort as well. And, and just a tiny bit of a, a response to what you've heard, well, that $640,000 you got in grant funds probably would not have materialized but for this project, and that is money that you have wanted to have. Your system improvement plan for water includes this extension of both the pipeline, so this is going along ways towards funding that. Secondly, I think, uh, Judy and maybe Rich, even might come back to a little meeting and talk to you about how you can get your SDC fund all by, uh, on this project as well, so that's. All right, that's all I have.
Any questions, David?
Good job.
All right. Council comments, start with Counselor Kaufman. Yeah, Frank?
Only thing I got to say is that high school football's in full swing. You guys wanna see some kids giving it all, go out there, watch their practice there every day.
When do the games start?
Um.
We're at the Nostaca, uh, Jamboree, it's next Friday, the following Friday, Nostaca comes here.
No, sorry, 8:29, we go to Nostaca for the Jamboree, 9:05, they go to Nostaca.
Oh my god.
And then 9:12, they go to Murder Point.
So, we don't, we don't.
Get them to our house.
We don't have a home game until when?
Until where it says, First of Monroe.
So, 9:19.
She says 19.
Yeah. Just ask the, the two.
All right.
I'll also post that schedule to the Toledo Facebook page, so.
I'll be able to see it. Right.
Counselor Mix?
Um, I had the opportunity, I went to the Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, and, um, they're afraid that we're slaying on them. Stu started that, really. Stu went, he's like, Stu came, and then you came, and then we thought maybe they were checking up on us, and then, um, nice to have you here. It's good because I can, um, stuff they're working on, I'm excited that's coming forward. They're working, um, they're getting ready to work on, um, creating some rules and, and stuff around, um, and creating some process in order to, um, address, like, on Gator Way, where they want, that, that there are people in that community asking for speed bumps, and it's been asked several times, well, we don't have any process in place for us to make that happen. So, the Planning Commission is working on that coming up very soon. They have been working on some other upgrades and stuff, and it's, it's really exciting and great to see that coming forward, and it, it, I think that's something I'm gonna continue doing is going to those meetings, because they all inevitably have questions, Council, there, and I may be able to answer, so that works out well, and, um, yeah, think of anything else. I think that that's pretty much it. That was my highlight of the week, being excited, so.
Jackie Burns?
Well, the Halloween Pet Parade is, uh, really first and foremost in my mind. Uh, over the weekend, I had talked with, well, actually, uh, Stu had put me, I think it was Stu, put me in touch with, uh, Brian Timmy.
Is that?
Yeah, because we wanna juice up the pet parade, since it's our second annual. And, and so, we need to have some music and liven it up a little bit, and I hope Homie House will have a booth at, at our pet parade fair too. Uh, but anyway, so, we're looking at, um, I was talking to Krista about doing, oh, Counselor Keating is making the flyers, is, uh, designing the flyers, and he thought he'd have them tomorrow, so, gonna get those in print, and then I wanna put them on social media, and I was talking to Krista about Facebook, geezer Facebook, my term, not hers, and so she was talking about other social media that people really go to besides us geezers, and so, so anyway, um, I'm excited about getting it promoted on, on, uh, different social media sectors.
Like the cart and that.
I have no idea. Hey, my ski's got me a husband, okay?
Okay.
So, uh, second Saturday in October, I think that's the 11th, is when it's gonna be, and so, um, just really wanna, I, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions and ideas that we might implement to have it be more than just walk around, you know, oh, okay, you got number one and you got number two, you know, to liven it up, just.
Put you in contact with Jamie Nicholson, who's also doing that garlic thing that same day over at Memorial Field, you know, where you're talking about the marriage made in heaven. So, there are gonna be two events at once, so you guys can back, piggyback off each other.
Okay. Okay. Well, then, what about this last obstacle course?
That's what I was thinking, is like a little agility contest.
Bring my goat, knock it by the side.
Just, and it's okay, so. It's not a pet parade, bring your pony.
Let me near it.
Put your pony on.
So you dress the goat up.
Daisy. So, dress the goat up as well. And it's a costume contest, so there, there's prizes.
Yeah.
I've gotta get out, pound the pavement, and get, uh, people to donate prizes.
You know what would be fun? We have Best Start's dog last year, costume prize, but what about Best Dressed? The owner's costume.
Well, we could have different catalogs, or change one dress.
Yeah.
We had a few of those last year, it was good.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's what's in the works, and I'm, I'm open for suggestions, and, um, help.
Okay. Anne, glad you made it.
Thanks, guys.
Bye, Hannah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
You bet.
Sure. Nothing. Kim?
We had a good day at the, um, Newport Rec Center for our LOC updates of all the legislative stuff that's going on.
Yeah, there's one next time.
Um, Rod and I both made it, and, um, like, there was something I wanted to talk about, but, oh, tomorrow night at the library, the library, um, got this fabulous grant that was awarded to libraries across the country for talking about your past and your future and your community. The library last month, it was last month, right?
Yeah.
Did the, talk about the past, they had the history centers come and people come and speak that had worked at GP, and it was really neat. Tomorrow night starts at 6:00, and we are talking about where we want to, you know, to go for the future. And it's not going to be a, um, I hate to say the word bitch fest, it's going to be very positive, and we're gonna keep it, you know, we're gonna keep it on track to, you know, think about real great things happening in the future. You may wanna come if you didn't know about it, Tyler. Um, yeah, and I think it's gonna be, it, it, every seat was full, the parking lot was full last time, so I'm hoping even more people come this time, if we have frontier seats, I don't care, but, you know, it's just great ideas and people coming together.
Krista, do you have to notice that in case too many? Try stuff. Did you ever notice that in case too many people show up?
They did, they did.
Okay, you did.
Yeah.
Anyway, invite all of you guys or anybody that's listening or spread the news or spread the word or whatever, so.
Yeah, six P M. Tomorrow night.
They have, they have really great snacks and drinks last time and. Yeah, and wonderful smiling people, which I really like.
I don't bring your goat.
You can bring your phone.
Not to the library, I can't.
We have a lot of fun.
So last week, I went to my Oregon Mayor's Association Annual Conference in Baker City. For those of you that have never been to Baker City, I really recommend that you go.
Really?
Yes, it is a beautiful town. Um, you know, it's one of those places where. How shall I say this? I would love to live, but it's too dark and cold in the winter. It just, it, I I would probably have to have it.
Yeah, Mr. Bumayi.
Darn right. Why do you think I'm moving there?
Just supposed to make Toledo a lovely city.
Like they put heaters on every corner in the wood, right? Um. And a lot of things came up about the transportation package. For those of you that aren't following, the transportation package that was presented before the legislature. For the launch session, which started back in January, failed. Um, I won't say miserably, but almost spectacular. Um, next week, they're going into a short session to, uh, talk about that. Now, there's a lot of information online. I'm not gonna go into all of it. I am gonna ask you though. To please make your wishes heard on this. Okay, as a city official. The one huge one that has to stay in that package is what's known as the fifty thirty twenty split. Okay, currently our gas taxes are done fifty percent to the state for ODOT. Thirty percent to our counties for their county roads and twenty percent to cities for city roads. Okay? To give you an idea. How many of us remember the First Street project for just three blocks to rebuild three blocks of First Street earlier this year?
I don't remember.
Okay?
Why the city should get fifty percent?
Hey, if I can just keep it at status quo, I'm gonna be happy. That project ate eighty percent of that state shared money for that year. Okay? So we didn't have money to do a lot of the other things we'd like to do because we had the emergency that we had to do. Okay? I want you to consider. If we don't have that shared money, how are we gonna do the street projects? Because the only other thing, and this was in old ODOT budgets, it's not currently in. The governor's package. The other thing I have to talk to them about is what's known as the small city allotment. Every other year, you get a certain chunk of money. It's a competitive bid process to do certain things. It's not a guaranteed fund. You have to buy bid, okay? So. If you have a chance, please contact. Representative David Gompert and Senator Dick Anderson. If you would like Toledo to continue to work on our roads. And so that we can keep them nice and smooth and safe for people. Um, and I ask that from everybody, whether you're online or in here, please. Reiterate to them how important that fifty thirty twenty split is.
Here, it's right in crayon.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um. You know. But.
Nope, that's, yeah, discriminating adults who need crayons, too. Yeah.
The recession was frustrating in some ways, but it was really good in others. There are other state funds and, uh, city manager, interim city manager. Klein and myself sat down with two of our state. Um, for lack of a better representatives, not as in a state representative, but representatives of the state. Um, and there are some things that we're looking at to, uh. Basically capture some state money to help us. With things like planning the infrastructure for the forestry building area. And what we will need to do for that. Uh, so that we can get a grant and have that done via grant and not out of our planning budget. So it's just those type of things that we've got going on. Um. You know, I love this town. I fell in love with this town thirty years ago. Um, I would not have spent. The last twenty-eight of those thirty years working with the people in this building if I didn't love it. Uh. This is a great town and. One of the things that is going to be addressed is the homie house and I love it. I've been a pair of five young men. And. There's a reason why we had four couches in my house. People would come over and ask, why do you have four couches? And it's like, well, you know. A lot of guys come and stay with us. So here is a, here's a statistic for you. In twenty twenty-three. Lincoln County School District identified six hundred and forty kids as being homeless in our district. Now, what you have to realize is that we had fifty-two hundred kids total in the district. But that number of six hundred and forty was more than three times what was in Deschutes County. Is Deschutes County a little bit bigger than us?
Just a bit.
Okay? We have an issue here.
What does that tell us actually?
It it tells us that economically, we're not doing well. For the workforce here. And we need to do a better job. We need to have better options for housing. Right now, if you go back through the last two years of statistics on our homeless population over winter. Okay, not the summers, the over winters. It is predominantly seniors and veterans. That are being priced out of where they live. And because rents are going through the roof. We have issues. But with people like Tyler stepping up. To start filling those gaps and getting these kids to realize that they matter. Okay? That is probably the hardest thing for me. Is working with kids that don't think anybody cares. That think that no one gives a crap about them. I see it in athletics. I see it with my kids' friends who would come over and stay with us. And they need mentorship. They need somebody to tell them you matter. And you matter so much that I'm willing to do this for you. And Tyler, you. I hope that you keep going around and going to every person you can because you are an inspiring speaker to that. And I am so proud to have called you friend and to be working with you in this project. Thank you very, very much for coming tonight. And hopefully, we can start making a dent in the issues that Lincoln County. Has been living with for quite a long time. Yes.
Interesting.
Yes.
There was an ask. Ask tonight, I believe.
We have that through discussion for next week?
Yeah, I would like to see that on next week's discussion minutes.
Yes.
So I wasn't gonna ask that. I was gonna demand it.
Well.
Just remember who can set the agenda.
That's right.
Just gotta do it.
That's why I was asking you.
I was gonna do it anyway, you asked her.
Well, now publicly you have to.
Well, I'm gonna publicly say it needs to be on our agenda.
Good.
How's that? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned.
Tyler, are you?